I call to order the March 27th City Council Meeting of Waynesboro. Welcome, everyone. Mr. Allen will be joining us by telephone tonight. For those in attendance this evening, if you wish to speak during the citizen comment period, please sign up in the sheet in the back of chambers. Mr. Short, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Item three is the adoption of the meeting agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look that over?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you so much. Mr. Wood, any discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We heard you, Mr. Allen. Item four is matters for mayor. I don't have anything this evening. We'll move on to matters from council.
Yes.
Anything?
Well, just a quick note. I'd like to say thank you to all the folks who reached out to me over the unfortunate, tragic passing of my cousin a couple of weeks ago. There's a lot of, a lot of people reached out, and I just wanted to say how much I appreciate me and the family both appreciated the kind words from everyone. One other thing real quick, I was happy that I got to go down to the Foundry on opening night. And if you don't have, you haven't had a chance yet to make it down there at one of their, at one of their events, you should go check it out. Bart's done a great job with it. It was a great crowd down there. They did a real good, just all the way around with it, and it's gonna be a good addition to Waynesboro. So, you know, if anybody sees Bart, make sure you pass along that, I don't know, this party council anyway, thought he did a fantastic job, especially in such a rush. So, good crowd too, though. That's it for me.
Anybody else?
The magic beans are coming to Waynesboro. Also, just heads up for that. No, just, I, just, one, one question I just thought I'd ask for Mr. Hamp and staff is, if you all could provide us maybe the status or if it, just a request really, if we could add a code enforcement link to our homepage, that, you know, it's already existing on the website, but just maybe a hyperlink on that front page for code enforcement. Appreciate it.
That's all I have.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Item six is consideration of consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? And that motion passes five zero. Item seven is to present a proclamation to the Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club of Waynesboro Stanton in Augusta County. And I'll read that. Okay. And this is for Mr. Omir Foster. Whereas Youth of the Year is the Boys and Girls Club of America's premier youth leadership program honoring young people and their achievements in leadership, service, academic excellence, and dedication to living a healthy lifestyle. And whereas we are here today to express special recognition to Omir Foster for being awarded Youth of the Year and to honor him for his outstanding character and performance as a member of the Boys and Girls Club of Waynesboro Stanton in Augusta County. And whereas Omir has proven himself to be a valuable asset to the Boys and Girls Club with his outstanding personality and dedication to other friends, club members, and fellow football teammates. And whereas although due to an injury, Omir was unable to participate in his high school senior football season, he worked constantly for the betterment of himself, the football team, and the community. And whereas the city of Waynesboro wishes to express its sincere appreciation to Omir for his unwavering humanity and now therefore be it resolved that I, Lana Williams, Mayor on behalf of the City Council of Waynesboro is proud to recognize Mr. Omir Foster as the Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club of Waynesboro Stanton in Augusta County and witness whereof, I do hereby set my hand and cause the seal of Waynesboro to be affixed this 27th day of March 2023. If you'd like to come forward.
So, I wanted to share a few words about Omir, if you will let me. I have the honor, I'm Deborah Freeman Bell, the Executive Director of your Boys and Girls Club, and I had the opportunity to recommend, recommend Omir, who participated in the state Youth of the Year competition in DC last Thursday through Saturday. Omir was not a finalist, but in our book, he's our winner, and he remains a winner. So, I just want to share my letter about him. It is with great pleasure that I recommend Omir Foster for Youth of the Year for the Virginia DC Boys and Girls Clubs. Omir was selected as our local Youth of the Year by staff and peers because he is the epitome of a productive, caring, and responsible citizen. We know he has a great future before him, and we are honored to be a part of his journey. For this recommendation, I thought about how easy it is to share about all of the amazing characteristics and qualities that Omir has. He is driven, he is kind, responsible, helpful, intelligent, and a leader for his peers and younger children. But after thinking about all of those important pieces of Omir, I thought about what has impressed me most about how he approaches his life path, sorry, beyond his remarkable qualities. Last year, Omir was faced with, Omir faced what was probably one of the biggest disappointments in his high school years. As a high school senior in football standout, he spent all of the spring and summer preparing to have his best and final high school football year. His work ethic during those training sessions was driven by his desire to excel in sports while also working as a junior staff in our summer camp. He balanced both of his passions while also finding time to navigate the special summertime before his senior year and could not wait to show his growth during the 2022 football season. We were all rooting for him and proud of his work. Early in the season, Omir was injured during a game. The injury unexpectedly ended his senior football season and interrupted his plans that he had worked so hard for. Everyone was devastated, including Omir. Instead of falling into self pity or changing his plan of working hard, Omir worked through his injury recovery, although he wouldn't be able to play in his season again. He continued supporting and encouraging his teammates and was someone that his coaches counted on to push his peers even though he wasn't on the field. He did this with sincerity and with class. His teammates ended with one of the best seasons that they had had in many years with Omir right there cheering them on. To me, this type of response and commitment to others is what we have come to expect from Omir. He is a true leader in the face of good times and adversity. Even when injured, he always remained productive, caring, and responsible. He is the epitome of the Boys and, of the Boys and Girls Club and represents us all well.
Thank you so much. She's gonna hand this to you. Presenting the proclamation. Thank you so much. If anybody would like to get some pictures out of the office. Congratulations and thank you. Would any other council members like to add?
I would.
You would.
So, running the Little League football and cheer when I did, Omir came in as a midget player when I first met him, much shorter than he is now, which is making me feel extremely old right now, and none of this surprises me about him. He always had the drive, the work ethic, you know, just, and going on to play ball in college, man, just so proud of you. Very proud of you. Yep.
Anybody else? Okay. Item eight is to receive a departmental update from the library director, Ms. Susan Verson.
I don't have. I'm supposed to leave this for work. Thank you.
Mayor Williams, can I ask the guys in the control room about the password for the housing?
Gentlemen in the control room, could you provide a password?
Does she have a thumb? Susan, you have a thumb drive?
Here we go.
You have a thumb drive, you can log in under your, but now, here, so.
I'm understanding the importance of IT. So, okay. Good evening. My name is Susan Verson, and I am the newish library director of Waynesboro Public Library. Thank you for taking the time to hear about the exciting things happening at Waynesboro Public Library. Most of the information is based on fiscal year 2022. So, here we go. Fiscal, Waynesboro Public Library, buy the book, fiscal year 2022, or don't buy the book because it's free at the library. So, Waynesboro Public Library connects people with information, resources, entertainment, and each other. Libraries are one of the few places left where everyone is welcome and everything is free. We have something for everyone. So, here's a quick overview of how we've been doing. Yellow is fiscal year 2022, blue is 21, green is 2020. So, as you can see, the good news is circulation is up even after the, or pre-pandemic numbers. So, we're excited about that. We've circulated approximately 160,000 physical items last fiscal year. The downside of that is that our foot traffic is lower than it was pre-pandemic. Not surprising, many people got out of the habit of going to places. Our digital resources, which is that third set of columns, remained about level, and then our computer use is starting to climb again, but obviously, people are coming back into our building, so we're excited about that. So, I want to talk a little bit about what we have and what we can do. So, Waynesboro Public Library's physical collection is comprised of over 70,000 books, DVDs, and more in our building. With your library card, you have access to over 1 million digital items. That includes access to 17 databases and four different online content providers. All of these resources provide lifelong learning. As I said, last year, we circulated approximately 160,000 items physically, 18,000 e-resources, and we aim to beat this in 2023. So far, as of the end of February of this year, we have circulated 119,000 physical items and 13,000 digital items. Little bit about who's coming into our building. So, last fiscal year, we saw approximately 55,000 people come in. We had approximately 8,600 computer users, about 412 Wi-Fi users, that, that number's a little bit harder to, to get out of our reports, and the total number of cardholders for just a Waynesboro Public Library card is about 16,000. With that card, you also have access to the Valley Library connection, which means you can also check out items from Stanton and the Augusta County systems, physical items. The age breakdown I thought was kind of interesting, you can see on the pie chart on the right, 25% of our cardholders are 60-plus, 60%, when you add all the other numbers together, are between 19 and 59, and 12% are below 18. That below 18 number might be a little deceptive because sometimes family members, that's not necessarily, that doesn't necessarily represent all the people under that age who use the library or checking things out. Sometimes you have parents who use the cards for them. So, what have we done in the last fiscal year? Well, we added back hours and we opened up on Saturdays, so we're very excited about that. We're getting our staff back up. We're not completely there yet, but we're working on it. We started distribution of free COVID tests to our community, so you can come in, you can get up to four. If you're sick, we ask you send somebody else, don't come into the library. We returned to in-person and inside programming. We also reopened our meeting rooms, our display spaces, and our art space, so those are open to our community to display artwork and community collections. We moved our local history collection, talk about that a little bit more later. We added several new databases. These have became really important during COVID and have continued to be used. The two I highlight here are News Bank and Creative Bug. News Bank was actually supported by our friends and funded by them, which is lovely, and it provides access to local, regional, and national newspapers, including the News Virginian. Creative Bug became very popular statewide during pandemic because you could learn all sorts of new hobbies, so both of those are very popular. We implemented a new events calendar and room reservation system, so it's easier to find out what's going on at the library and to reserve spaces there, so both our study rooms, which we have, our conference room, and the meeting room. We added back more seating into the library and replaced our old book drop, and again, that was thanks to our friends group, they've been very supportive. You can see a picture of the new chairs and the book drop up in the top right. And we got a new dinosaur, so we're very excited about that, so that is, thanks to the Virginia Museum of Natural History. We have two dinosaurs now, so the small one there is a Tenontosaurus, I had to practice that several times, and we named him Molder, so. And then we also have a seed library now, so it's getting to be spring. If you're looking for seeds, you can come into the library, take them, they're free, and then ideally, you bring them back in the fall after you've harvested some. And these are some pictures, so you can see some programs, the local history collection has moved, we digitized some yearbooks, we held an election for your favorite dinosaur in November, we're gonna do that again. Those services. What do we have for you? Libraries are more than just rooms full of bookshelves. They have movies, magazines, audiobooks, but we also have things you don't traditionally think about in a library. We have things like nature backpacks, culture passes, laptop computers, DVD players, seed library, COVID tests, and so much more. So, we also have digital collections, and that means your library is available to you 24 hours a day, seven days a week with your library card, so you can get eBooks, audiobooks, music, movies. The things that are unusual, the nature backpack and the culture passes, you can check out a pass to the Frontier Culture Museum for free and go over there with a family. Nature Backpack has all sorts of fun things to take into the woods, including a State Park Pass, a Virginia State Park Pass, so those are great. Coming soon is this new idea we've created called a steam kit. Again, it's a way for you to experience a hobby without fully investing in it, so we've got things like jewelry making, geocaching, bird watching, and again, that is supported by our friends, so they've been wonderful this year. I should point out that our physical collection also includes a large print collection as well as a Spanish collection. What can we do for you? So, libraries are more than just the building and what's in it. We can do things for you, too. We provide programs for education and pleasure that promote lifelong learning. We have public computers and Wi-Fi throughout the building, printers, faxes, photocopiers, notaries. We have reopened our meeting room spaces and display spaces to the community. We have a hikers' corner that we keep stocked, and we expect to see a lot of visitors in there in the next couple of weeks. But most important to any library are the people, both those who work there and those who ask us questions and/or use our services. The WPL staff provides programs, answers all sorts of questions in person or via email or phone. We help patrons find resources both physically and digitally. Librarians don't know everything, but we know where to find things. So, and I do want to highlight two things on that list, the reading recommendations and Book a Librarian. Those are things that you, you know, if you finish that series, you want another book, we can help you find it. You don't have to do all that research, we want to do that for you. And then the Book a Librarian is an appointment-based system that you can sign up and get half hours worth of research time with a librarian, so we can help you with that research question, we can help you with resources in our collection or maybe outside, so. Programs, that's the other big part of what libraries provide. We returned to in-person and inside this past fall. We continued some of the popular programs from before the pandemic and also some things we experimented with during the pandemic. So, we had a lot of craft kits, and those were very popular, so we turned that back into an in-person program, both, and then we got to use the parks, so we went out to the parks and did the programs out there, we did them outside. So, pandemic allowed us to experiment with platforms and formats and spaces for our programs, so we're going back out into the parks in, just in April. Previews are some new things we're trying, play and learn. COVID babies didn't really have a chance to learn to socialize, so we've started a play and learn program for them to just come and meet other kids and play with toys in a very relaxed kind of atmosphere. We're working more with senior exercise programs, D and D online, so again, we're trying online programs to see who would, who would benefit from that platform. A library crawl in conjunction with our partner libraries, and then we've brought movies back. And so, these are just some pictures from some of the programs. We did Clue at the library, so you got to do a live-action Clue, that was very fun. We had Santa at the library in December, drop-in device help, so come see us and we'll help you figure stuff out after Christmas. The other part of a library is the importance of playing nicely with others, so that's where outreach and partnership come in. Fiscal year 22 and 23 have been about reopening, reminding our community that we are here. This means we've been attending events at local schools, health fairs, or going to events like Fall Foliage. We've been using social media to reach people and talk about events, and fun posts like the Bookface Friday, which is the images on the bottom left, are very fun, and if you don't follow us on social media, I encourage you to, because you can see all the fun things Kathy posts. Partnerships are also important, and this year has been about reconnecting and creating new partnerships. Challenges. No one exists without challenges, they are what make life interesting. Our library is no exception. Want to be clear, these are challenges, not necessarily problems. We have an aging building, so the good news is that our elevator is in the process of being upgraded, but like many places, we were caught in a supply chain issue, so hopefully by June, that will be rectified. The lights in the drop ceiling in the building are getting a little older, they are gonna need some care and attention. Apparently, our light bulbs are no longer made, nor are the tiles for our drop ceiling, so. Loss of program space. As you know, the registrar moved into our lower level last summer, this prompted the move of the local history collection. This move has created opportunities for partnerships and exposure for the library and the registrar to different members of our community. However, it has reduced the library's storage space and limited our programming space as well as our community meeting space, and when early voting begins, we do lose a good portion of our programming space. The local history collection move was a big challenge because it was done very quickly, and it was a lot, it was a big collection, and it needed a lot of attention. So, the move provided an opportunity for us to review the collection and make some decision, decisions on how we envision its use. Many of the books have been moved up to the main floor where they are more accessible to the public, they still don't circulate, and the microfilm machine has been moved up as well, and that is definitely getting a lot more use. It forced us to give this collection our attention, which we have, so we're working on a collection development policy, and we're gonna be more focused in how we continue to use it and develop it. We moved some of the resources to other local organizations who would be a better fit for them. My new mantra is we are a public library, not an archive, so my staff hears me say that over and over again. And the last thing I want to say is staff health and morale. Coming out of the pandemic, we have learned how to be more flexible and realize the importance of cross-training, the use of digital programming, and meeting technology. This is very stressful, lots of new things, learning over a very short period of time, and supporting staff with a safe place to come each day and providing a caring environment have also been made evident. Nobody wants to be, feel forgotten, and library staff is no exception, so that's a challenge that I try and think about every day as I go into work. And looking to the future, so we are hoping to increase our programs, so libraries provide so many things to a community, a safe place to come, information and education, Wi-Fi, computer access, again, I can talk all night, but also enjoyment. Libraries should be a fun and exciting place to visit, and programs are a major way we can provide pleasure and information to our community. So, we want to work on increasing the variety and the number, as well as the number of people coming into our building. COVID changed our habits. We also recognize that we need to reach our community where they are. Not everyone can get to us, so we need to get to them, hence our outreach. In this past fall, we hired an outreach and engagement community coordinator, and we've also worked with Community in Motion to go out into our community a little bit more. Partnerships, again, working to create and renew some of those partnerships. And then, I'm a new director, and I'm gonna look at a new strategic plan. Ours is about to expire in 2025, so that will be something we'll be working on in the next two years. And because I can't leave without smiling faces, these are some of the smiling faces that come into your public library, staff and patrons, and we had lots of lovely love letters in February because it was Library Lovers Month, so just a few, few happy faces to look at. So, thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Does anyone have any questions? For Susan?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item nine is to consider adopting a resolution accepting Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, American Rescue Plant Act, ARPA funds, and committing to providing a local match for professional services. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, ma'am. This evening, the mayor, excuse me, the council's asked to approve this resolution accepting the grant. A little bit of information on the grant itself, as the mayor said, it originates from the Department of Environmental Quality. It's for approximately $2.4 million and comes with about $150,000 local match. The city has already satisfied about $30,000 of that match, and we would plan to satisfy the remaining match requirement with engineering costs associated with project design, permitting, and project quality adminis, uh, excuse me, quality assurance and contract administration. The funds will be used to conduct inflow and infiltration rehabilitation work in the community. You're likely aware that the age and condition, excuse me, of our sanitary sewer collection system is a concern and requires ongoing maintenance and renewal. This grant will allow us to perform this important programmatic work in the Winona area and in the area of South Winchester and South Delphine Avenues. I'm proud to say that Waynesboro was among two recipients in the valley of this grant, the other being Wintergreen, and we were alerted to this grant opportunity by a former Waynesboro employee who cut his teeth in our stormwater program and in our Department of Public Works and Engineering, and he was good enough to recall our program and its history and practice of being prepared for opportunities, so he alerted us to this opportunity, and our current staff were able to submit for the grant. And so, this is an important opportunity to, again, renew and rehabilitate our sanitary sewer collection system and do so with the benefit of state dollars, thus saving us local dollars. Be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to consider adopting the resolution accepting Department of Environmental Quality, American Rescue Act, ARPA funds, and committing to providing local match for professional services?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any discussion? Okay. This ordinance having been introduced and seconded, will receive final, final consideration at the April 10 regular business meeting.
So, actually, this evening, it's, what we're looking for is a resolution, an approved resolution, and the council can, if they're so inclined, vote and approve the resolution.
Right, so we've had a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 10 is to consider adopting the following appropriation ordinances totaling 403,416. Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, members of council. The majority of this, of these ordinances are $313,847 for various grants to the school operating funds, that, those don't require any local match. That's them appropriating grants that they've already received from the state and federal government. There's also $64,549 that requires no local match to the CAPSOL fund, create a digital opportunity plan, $25,000 of proceeds to the general fund, and that's a pass-through agreement that the city helped, or did on behalf of Commonwealth Crush, and then $20 donations to the general fund for Police Week expenditures. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now, if not, you can adopt this ordinance this evening if council desires.
Any questions? Okay. Let's see here. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinances totaling $403,416 as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any aye? And that motion passes five to zero. Any questions? Okay. Let's see here. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinances totaling $403,416 as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion passes five to zero. Item 11 is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $7,580 of restricted fund balance to the general fund for increased access controls at the Gorsuch Building. Mr. McCormick?
Yes, ma'am. These funds are from your restricted fund balance that can only be used for courthouse security. The reason the appropriation needs to be read twice instead of just once is because these were fees that were collected in previous years and then ended up in fund balance and will roll over to this year. So, this one can be introduced and seconded this evening and then carried to the following meeting.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. McCormick? Okay. Do I have a motion to introduce the ordinance appropriating $7,580 of restricted fund balance to the general fund for increased access controls at the Gorsuch Building?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? And this ordinance will be considered at the April 10 regular business meeting. And that brings us to item 12, communication, correspondence, and calendar. Mr. Hamp?
Just one item, Ms. Mayor. April 3, a reminder that April 3 at 6:00 PM, the city manager will present a recommended budget for fiscal 2024, and that we currently have a work session scheduled for the following evening.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hamp. Item 13 is citizen comment period. I would like to remind speakers to state your name and address for the record. You'll have four minutes to address council. The light system will serve as a timer. Once it turns yellow, you have about 30 seconds remaining, and the red light indicates your time is up. We ask that you direct your comments to council, and please be respectful to those that are speaking.
Kevin Ryan.
So, my name is Kevin Ryan. I live at 1,000 Fairway Drive, 1,007 Fairway Drive here in Waynesboro. I am the president of Friends of the Library. When Susan refers to Friends, that's us. The Friends of the Library is a private association of individuals who first came together in the mid-1960s to support the Waynesboro Public Library with time and money. Over the past year, we have enjoyed working with Susan. She, in turn, has worked to do basically all the things that she just reviewed with you. This last February, we approved $19,000 for library equipment, programs, and services not covered by the normal library budget. In addition to dues and donations, one of the ways we raise this kind of money is through sales of used books. In fact, we just happen to be having a sale of used books this week at the library. It's our big four-day annual sale. So, please come browse and buy. Wednesday is for members of the Friends only, but you can join at the door and shop to your heart's content. We always hold this sale in the fall, but we could not do so in 2022 because of election activities associated with the relocation of the Director of Elections operations to the library lower level. Even now, in the spring of 2023, our usual book sale space is restricted because of election equipment storage requirements. This is just one example of unintended disruptions to community uses that you heard about a little earlier. Moving the election operations to the library may have been expedient, but we all know expediency only takes you so far. That's why we support whatever work may be going on to reach a long-range solution that will work better for the elections operations and also restore more normal operations to the library. So, thank you, and go library.
Thank you.
Craig Scott?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Councilman. Craig Scott, 1616 Armistead Road in Ward B. As you know, I'm, believe it or not, a win-win guy and posited market-based solutions to improve services and lower costs for our city. Whether it's a cash sweep account via our treasury, as you know, interest rates have been going up, and that would be a source of revenue, maybe to fund our police, and no additional burden to the taxpayers here. Market-based solutions for trash collection, leaf collection, snow removal, water services, on and on and on. Public transportation can be done by private jitneys via a phone app or a phone number at a fraction of the cost with door-to-door services at a lower cost. Two meetings ago, we had issues involving housing. There are macro conditions. There are governmental auspices that crush regulations, oppressive stuff from HUD and other unlawful organizations. But I'm here to offer an opportunity for an organization that has been around in Waynesboro since 1969 that has helped hundreds of families and individuals repurposing homes, homes that have been in foreclosure or under other financial distress. It's no cost to taxpayers. We have many buildings that are either derelict or underutilized or improperly utilized. And with the growing cost of housing, I think this is a wonderful venue, again, with caring volunteers. Volunteerism is the key to making our city the best-run city in the States United. I can offer the phone number and meetings for the organization at no cost. Maybe at a time when you have a spare time for a cup of coffee. I think it could be a win-win for the city and maybe help a few people that can help themselves and/or offer clean, good, wholesome housing that would help our citizens make better citizens. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mary Wilson?
Oh, my topic's been addressed, but thank you.
All right. That brings us to, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Lee, I'll take that. And do I have a second? By Mr. Short?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.